One, two, three, four, five. Answers are not this.
I know. It's okay. I like being there.
It's scary.
But it's good. I'm just gonna warn you. Oh, you're right.
Darrell wasn't gonna be here, but I don't know about Rob.
Oh.
I think Darrell's on a trip. All right, so we're two minutes late, so sorry about that, everyone. We're gonna call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as.
Thank you, everyone. Seeing we don't have an invocation for today's study session, Bonnie, if you do the roll call for us, please.
Morris? Here. Andrews?
Here.
Nelson? Henchel? Spence?
Here.
Walter?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
McAllister?
Here.
Seifert?
Here.
All right, first public comment. Read the rules, Bonnie. If we don't follow.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the board may state his or her name and township or district. Providing a specific address is not recommended. Persons may address the board on matters or issues which are relevant and remain to county government as determined by the chairperson. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter, excluding time needed to answer commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, allow an additional opportunity or time to speak if determined remain necessary to the discussion. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4 Order of Business. However, public comment may be received during the meeting when a specific agenda topic is scheduled for discussion by the board. Prior to the first public comment, the chairperson will indicate the topics on the agenda for which public comment will be accepted. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the board until called upon by the chairperson. The board shall not comment or respond to a person who is addressing the board. Silence or non-response from the board should not be interpreted as disinterest or disagreement by the board. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Thank you, Bonnie. Anyone wish for public comment? Going once? Going twice? Fantastic, on we go. Have a motion approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Flynn. Approval of agenda, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Fantastic, the agenda is approved. Discussion 5A, Mr. Elger, are you gonna tee this up? Or?
Sure. With us this morning, we have Kristi Minervini and Ashley Halliday Schmatt from the, I'm not sure, Coalition and Homelessness Today, but please welcome Ashley.
Thanks, Nate. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ashley Halliday Schmatt, and I am the Director of the Northwest Michigan Coalition Tend Homelessness. Today, our presentation is an overview of the newly formed Housing and Homelessness Task Force. We've met now as a task force work group twice, or the working groups, rather, have met twice. Our advisory council has met once. And this is just kind of an overview and an update of some of the recommendations that have already come forward. So, the Housing and Homelessness Task Force brings together government, nonprofits, healthcare and housing authorities, law enforcement businesses, and other partners to coordinate efforts to create housing solutions. So, every community across the country who has formally done a plan, or a community action plan, to reduce and end homelessness, has formed a task force. And it has been led in partnership with local government. So, we're very excited and grateful that the county and the city have partnered with us to be on the leadership team of the task force in coordination with all the folks that you'll see both in your five-pager and throughout the presentation. The staffing support of the task force is myself. We've brought on Kristi Minervini to be the task force support coordinator. And then, for some of the work groups and the advisory council, we have a facilitator, Rick Bellingham, who was also leading the county, city, and local stakeholders through the homelessness collective. The goals of the task force, first and foremost, to develop a unified strategy to prevent and end homelessness in our region, not just the city of Traverse City, but the county at large. So, the task force is specific to Grand Traverse County, to address systemic barriers to housing, maximize funding and resources, enhance service coordination, track progress and accountability, incorporate community perspectives and input, and advocate for policy solutions. This is the structure of the task force. We have the leadership team, which Nate sits on, Liz Vogel, myself, Sakura Takano from Rotary Charities, and Ryan Hannan as a subject matter expert. The advisor, the general membership, or the advisory committee, is made up of the leadership team and several other community leaders. I believe those are listed out in the five-pager. And then, the working groups are Safety Net Services, Emergency Shelter and Services, and Housing Solutions. These are generally the things each work group will work on, all focusing on these areas that are related to preventing and ending homelessness in our community. And I'll go through those in a little bit when we get into each work group. So, what the work group is, it's a strategic, time-limited group focused on developing a plan for our community to prevent and end homelessness. It's grounded in the belief that homelessness is, in fact, a housing problem, and that housing is the solution. It's focused on sustainable system-level planning. That could include policy recommendations and funding, committed to data-driven strategies that build the right mix of shelter, supportive housing, and affordable units in our community. What it is not, the task force is not a general poverty task force or a forum to address all social service needs. If we start doing that, we get really away from the root of what causes homelessness, which is a lack of affordable housing. It's not focused on basic needs, like food, clothing, transportation, or employment. Those are important to this community, but we have the Basic Needs Coalition, and we have other venues to address those needs. And it's not long-term, so this is not a forever thing. This is a time-limited task force to develop a plan and to come back to you all at the end of this year or in very early 2026 with the implementation strategy for the plan. The task force is tackling these five big questions. What existing resources and strengths can we build upon as a community in each of those focus areas? What are the biggest challenges and gaps in our current homeless response system? What specific measurable changes would improve outcomes? Who needs to be involved, like who's not already around the table? And what are our immediate next steps to move forward? So then, these are all the working groups. Out of the working groups come recommendations to inform our plan. We develop the working groups to really include the things that will tackle prevention and ending of homelessness. Safety Net Services is primarily focused on preventative strategies, so trying to strengthen the support system that prevents homelessness and assists those currently experiencing it. I'm not gonna go through every single one of these. These are the brainstorming notes from the first work group meeting. Let's get to recommendations, though. So, the recommendations out of the brainstorming sessions of the work group that have already come to the advisory council help promote diversion efforts and support an approach that prioritizes providing permanent affordable housing. So, a theme that you'll see, even if it's talking about prevention strategies, even if it's talking about emergency shelter, it's always focused on affordable housing. So, the recommendation here is to enhance diversion services. We know that the preventative strategy that has the highest impact on the inflow into homelessness is diverting folks who don't need to be in our homeless response system. We do that every night at Safe Harbor. We do that at the Goodwill Inn, and we do that system-wide. That's a strategy to help people identify solutions that are outside of homelessness. Second working group, Emergency Shelter and Services. Here, this work group's goal is really to determine how many emergency shelter beds we need in this community. Who's going to fund that? How they're going to get funded? Who will operate it? And where it's located? The recommendations from the first work group meeting that went to the advisory council, looking for communications, new policies, or opportunities to replace or increase revenue. So, really talking about funding. How are we going to fund emergency shelters sustainably? We've had commitments from both the city and the county for two years for Safe Harbor. While we developed this plan, really talked about sustainability models for shelter. Third working group, Housing Solutions. Here, talking about how do we expand permanent supportive housing for people experiencing chronic homelessness, while also increasing the supply of deeply affordable units, meeting units between zero, or for folks, zero to 50% of the area median income. Recommendations here, really talking about deeply affordable housing. Some solutions that got brought forward, things related to the housing TIF, a millage, other funding streams that can support this long-term. And then, finally, the advisory council. These are the priorities that were voted on. So, we took all these brainstorming materials from each work group, posted them on the wall. Advisory council members voted on what they felt were priorities from each work group. And those are listed here. I'll go through just a couple. Safety Net Services, talking about the diversion efforts. So, expand shelter diversion staffing and resources. Expand the QRT coverage to cover the whole county. And improve community education on existing safety net services for our clients. Housing Solutions, or I'm sorry, Emergency Shelter and Services, some of the priorities that came out of the advisory council, again, focus on funding long-term housing solutions rather than managing homelessness. We know we need emergency shelter in this community, but we need to figure out to what degree. Communities that overdevelop strategies and services that don't ultimately end homelessness create a lack of outflow out of homelessness and spend a lot of time and effort managing it. That's a very expensive strategy and doesn't get us to the solution of actually ending homelessness, which is rooted in permanent housing. And then, Housing Solutions, like I said, ensure that the housing TIF funds are utilized for deeply affordable housing to the extent possible. Develop an incentive toolkit to encourage affordable housing. A lot of talk here about policy reform that could get us more affordable housing units. Once we have the recommendations, and even through brainstorming, this is how we determine, as a leadership team, which will meet next week, which recommendations kind of make it to the plan. And we're using this recommendation funnel. So, we take every recommendation that the advisory council has. We'll feed it through this. Is the recommendation data-informed and achievable? Does it align with the values and the Housing First principles? Does it leverage partnerships without harming anyone? Will it benefit multiple stakeholders? And are there measurable outcomes? We felt that this was appropriate to use rather than just throwing things at the wall and seeing what sticks. We know what works to end homelessness. And then, finally, our timeline. So, started this leadership coordination in March of this year. Right now, we're kind of in the strategize and problem-solve phase of this, working throughout the summer. We will have public input sessions. We'll also have stakeholder feedback sessions with folks with lived experience of homelessness to inform the strategies of the plan. Finalize the plan hopefully in November and unveil it in December. Have some implementation strategies in early 2026. And then, finally, this is what the county can expect from the task force. Regular written progress reports, and we can talk about how you'd like that, if you'd like me to come here and do those. Or Nate and I can come up with a written report to send you all. Ongoing openness and transparency. A draft report and study session in October. And then, finally, a community action plan to address and end homelessness. And that is obviously the goal of this. So, that's it. That's the overview and open it up for questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Dame Sally Schmatt. Look forward to the big D plan at the end of the year. Any questions? My group? Nice presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
To Mr. Andrews.
Yes, thank you. One of the common threads that some of us here in the community is a real challenge associated with transportation. And I didn't see Beta listed as a partner in any of the work groups. What is the, and that involves, right, getting people everywhere they need to go. A lot of the community we're talking about don't have cars. How does Beta fit in? How does public transit solutions ensure that they're being considered in the process?
Yeah, that's a great question. Beta was not included in the plan, but what we've done with several stakeholders that we felt like are critical but not, like this is a big-time commitment to attend all these meetings, to attend the work groups throughout the summer. We have offered to many groups just one-on-one interviews with Kristi or myself related to the general task force or a specific strategy that came up. So, oversight on our part, and we can correct that.
It's come to our attention that our day shelter is facing closure. August 22nd, I believe, is the date they've given unless substantial funding comes along. Where does that fit into this planning?
Sure, so Jubilee is involved on the Emergency Shelter and Services work group. That just met, what was that, Thursday, last Thursday, for the second time. They're involved there. The work group has not come up with yet the budget for everything. So, what we're kind of trying to do behind the scenes of the work group is come up with some recommendations related to the budget for that. So, we have the budget for Central United Methodist. We have budgets for Goodwill Inn, Safe Harbor, and Jubilee House. And what we're trying to do is compile those and figure out, you know, what are some best practices and strategies to make a comprehensive plan around that? I can't comment at the moment on the day shelter funding need that has not been vetted through the task force at this time.
Do you expect it would get vetted? I mean, it sounds like there's a direct ask to at least the city, and it's coming to the county, as I, I've already been approached.
Okay.
Would that go through the task force? Would it be prudent to go through the task force? And how do, how does that level of collaboration work to ensure that the funnel applies to every funding request?
Sure. I don't know that we've completely figured that out yet. What we didn't, what we were kind of anticipating is there being those recommendations and considerations involved in the plan, not kind of along the way. There was no mechanism through the task force to say, if you want to ask for funding tomorrow, as we're developing the plan, you have to vet it through everyone. That is not part of the task force. The task force is to come up with the plan by the end of the year. So, there wasn't a mechanism established within that through the leadership team either to determine you had to get, not permission, but vetting through if you wanted funding along the way. That was not part of this, as we planned it.
So then, how does that relate to your organization's request for the million dollars to the city? Is that also independent of the task force? Or was that vetted through the task force?
That is a little bit of both. The permanent supportive housing ask was, I want to say, we gave public comment in, I think, April to the city. And that came forward as a request from commissioners to try to get a line item in the budget before the city voted on their upcoming budget cycle, to get a line item for the task force, to also support the resolution that they made in December to end chronic, or partner with us to end chronic homelessness. So, it's kind of both. It was embedded within their resolution as well as to get it as a line item in the budget for what comes out of the task force. We know permanent supportive housing is going to come out of the task force, more of it. So, we felt comfortable requesting that prior to the plan being completed. Ultimately, didn't get included, but.
You asked specifically about what do the regular progress reports look like? And I would just note that in our resolutions supporting Safe Harbor, we specified that the homeless task force would provide monthly written reports that will be included in the consent calendar of a regular board meeting, reporting on their meetings and activities. So, to the extent, you know, what does that look like? It is a monthly written report.
Yep.
Probably just the minutes from each of the group meetings that can go in our consent calendar as a receive and file. If that's helpful to, you know, we don't necessarily need you to create new things. And we don't necessarily need you to come every, at least that's my feeling.
I think that's probably a safe assumption that you don't need to be here every month.
Thank you.
See, at the end of the year, just send us a note.
Okay.
I have some questions, but I saw, are you through, Commissioner Andrews? I saw Commissioner Spence with her hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Ashley. I feel like there's a countercurrent in the public. I like what the task force is doing. And I feel like you could possibly bullet point or have an executive summary of the steps involved, because I do have conversations with people in the public who still don't get it. They don't really understand that this is a process of distilling, for lack of a better word, the different types of situations that people are in who need different types of support for housing.
Okay.
And I think an executive summary or something very short would be helpful to share with people, especially people who are frustrated and want to take extreme approaches to this issue. And I always try to remind them that there are elderly people who are experiencing homelessness. People are just like in a transition point, and you just can't put everyone into one bucket and send them out of sight.
Right.
And I would really like to convey that. And I think that you could be helpful and put it in layperson's terms.
Sure, happy to.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Walter.
Thanks. This is really well organized, so thank you for this.
Thank you.
And I also appreciate the clarity of the timeline and the meeting schedule. So, are these meetings of the, everything from leadership team to the council and then the individual committees, for lack of a better term, are those open to the public or open to people?
Nope, those were invite-only, and the invitation list was developed at the leadership level.
Okay, just wondered, because they're all on here, times and dates and stuff, so I just wondered if that was publicly available. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner McAllister.
I want to thank you for taking on a monumental task that is vital to our community. And although there's probably a million questions I could ask, I look forward to your recommendations and as you dial it down. So, I think once you dive into it a little deeper and really hit your points, we'll know a little more on that. So, I want to say thank you for taking your time, because I think it's a huge task. I don't know, that's great, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one quick question. It's my understanding that Safe Harbor only operates at night, and the building is empty during the day. So, has there been any kind of conversation? Or even if it's a possibility, I get sometimes people don't get along. The Jubilee House relocating to operate during the daytime in Safe Harbor, would that be some kind of cost savings and help with their budget? Would that even be relationately possible?
Potentially, potentially. I don't want to speak on behalf of either of those organizations. That had come up, the last time I remember it being fully discussed was during COVID. I think it was Mayor Lewis at the time, and Michelle Howard from the library convened a group to talk about day shelter services. And that was the last time I remember it fully being discussed. But it's definitely something I can take back to both of them, especially after the public comment that was given on Monday night.
Thank you. Any more questions? Of course.
Thank you. It seems like the Emergency Shelter and Services Subcommittee would be looking at precisely those sorts of questions related to ensuring day shelter, continuity of day shelter. I don't know if you are able to answer any of, anything related to Safe Harbor operations. So, one of the reasons, as I understand it, that this task force was created, to the extent the county was a convenor of it, was because of our resolutions supporting Safe Harbor back in February. A condition of that funding was a task force convening and meeting. Other conditions in that same resolution included ensuring coordinated entry and diversion between community partners and Safe Harbor. How's that going?
Yeah, great question. That's going really well. So, we have a diversion specialist onsite at Safe Harbor at least twice a week. That person's meeting with every single person who is new to Safe Harbor or, and/or, experiencing homelessness for the first time. Most of the folks at this point who are staying at Safe Harbor are folks who we already know about, right? Like, they were outside, now they're inside, which was the goal of that. So, most are not new to us, but anyone who is new, we have the diversion specialist onsite. And then, how coordinated entry is working at this point with Safe Harbor is, Safe Harbor is sharing a nightly roster with our coordinated entry team, our call center folks, who do the intakes and the screenings with people experiencing homelessness. They're sharing that nightly. And then, there's a requirement, I'm not sure where they're at at this point. I want to say it's within three to five days that folks make contact with that team. And so, the team has kind of tabs on who's new and who's still kind of outstanding and needs to contact them.
The team being the task force team?
Oh, sorry, no. Oh, you guys don't work in hard. I'm not being specific enough, I'm sorry. The team would be the intake team. So, the call center folks who are actually the ones doing coordinated entry. So, taking the calls of everyone who's new, doing the screening, ensuring they're actually experiencing homelessness, trying to divert them over the phone, and then connecting them with the diversion specialist onsite.
And is that housed through the NMCAA?
It is, yes.
So, they are getting the information from Safe Harbor in relatively real time?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And who is the, you said there's a diversion specialist that's there twice a week?
Yes.
Where do they come from? Which organization within the?
Yeah, right now, they are employed at NMCAA. We also have another diversion specialist employed through Goodwill. So, they kind of tag-team that.
And then, relatedly, another condition of the funding for Safe Harbor was to collect metrics, working with the partners. They're to provide our board with general metrics each month, number of guests, number of guests connected with services, those sorts of things. I understand that, you know, the official SLOP went year-round, I want to say, May 6th.
Sounds right.
So, would we expect the May numbers soon? And when, what's the cadence that we might expect that? And could we treat it the same in terms of putting it on our consent calendar for receive and file along with the minutes of the meetings?
Yep, so the, for the Safe Harbor data request first, I do have, so Pat Livingston, the Safe Harbor Board Chair, and I worked on the, it might have actually been April numbers, because I remember working on it mid-May. So, we already have the April numbers. It takes us a little bit of time to reconcile data. So, you can probably expect the following month, the middle of the following month for the previous. So, for May, you can expect that very soon. And I'm working with Pat directly on that. We have a meeting with our data analyst coming up as well. So, we have that on schedule. And then, the meeting minutes from the work groups, geez, that's a Christie, yeah, when it, week following.
And is it, I don't, we think, I don't think we want you to create a lot of work. Are the metrics we're asking for consistent with the information you're already collecting?
For Safe Harbor? Yes.
Okay.
Did you have a question, Commissioner Walter, or a comment?
Okay, just one more. You know, there was a state report recently that spoke to the reported numbers of youth experiencing homelessness, like within school districts and Traverse City area public schools. Schools has hundreds of kids who are technically considered homeless by that metric that the state puts out. I don't see Traverse City area public schools in any of these groups. Were they invited, or can they be invited to be a part of this?
Yeah, so our partnership with TCAPS looks a little bit different. We have a longstanding coordination relationship with, what is it called? I always want to call it STEP, but. I always want to call it STEP, but, um, the Student Success, uh, Network. Our outreach teams and our shelter teams have direct relationships with her. So anytime a family is experiencing homelessness and has minor children in the home, they get a referral every single time. So that's how that works and that goes back and forth. In terms of unaccompanied youth, so young people under age 18 who are couch surfing or just not with their, um, their parents, um, that is a little bit outside of our realm. That, uh, work is led by, um, the Child Welfare System and, uh, Child and Family Services. So that's kind of where that happens. The numbers we get asked about every single year this report comes out, the numbers are a little bit, um, they're just different. They're, they're tracking different metrics in terms of young people experiencing homelessness. They, they are counting not literally homeless folks, so not, um, young people sleeping on the streets or in our shelters. They're counting people who are, have one night of housing instability throughout the year. So a family could have, um, been unstably housed, you know, for a week throughout the school year and they get counted. Um, and that definition is very, very different than our definition, so.
Yeah, it just seemed like, you know, relative to the rest of the state, our area was very high.
Uh huh.
And so I wondered what role they were playing in this as well.
Yeah, um, probably worth doing, like I said, with, um, Beta, a, a one-on-one interview. I think they're, with them, like I said, we have that, the relationship that exists, um, today with our service provide, like on the ground level is a lot more important, um, to have working strongly than it is to have them at the task force when their involvement is critical in our community, but it's, I see that as, um, those numbers as driven by poverty, not necessarily literally homeless folks.
Okay, thank you.
More comments, questions, concerns? Mr. Morris.
So I get an unfortunate sense that there are a lot of people who have surface compassion for people who are experiencing homelessness for one reason or another. But they want something to be done, but they don't want it near their neighborhood or, um, in my backyard or, um, how do you personally combat that sort of, um, thinking?
Sure, great question. It's really nothing new, so this, um, this came up, um, in our community pretty strongly the first time Safe Harbor, uh, wanted to go to the permanent location on Wellington. I wasn't involved at this level in the work at that time, but it, it's nothing new to our community, it's nothing new, um, to the national landscape of homelessness. It's either, um, about a shelter, it's about unsheltered, uh, folks experiencing homelessness, or it's even about affordable housing going up in a neighborhood. So what we have to do is rely on our data that shows that actually property values don't decrease because you have affordable housing built in your neighborhood. The more we can build out deeply affordable housing, the less people we have experiencing homelessness. So we just have to keep relying, um, on what works and repeating what works.
Anything else? Fantastic, thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you all.
Appreciate that. We're gonna move right on to 5B.
Uh, good morning Commissioners, a few weeks ago, uh, Mr. Chase and Mr. Como brought forth to us, uh, two individuals from OpenGov. Samantha and Chris are, uh, Samantha and Chris are here today to, uh, ask, answer questions that you may have about the product that we are hoping to, uh, use in the future. And Mr. Chase and Chris are here to give any, uh, guidance or answer any questions that you may have of them. Again, we're not looking for approval.
That's what I'm looking for.
This is something that is, uh, from our perspective, falls in line with our strategic planning for using technology to have better results going forward in the future. And we're not asking for approval, of course, today, it's a study session, but it is something that is, will take a little bit of time to introduce to you. And we wanted to have a free flow discussion with both us as well as Samantha and Chris.
All right. Thank you, thank you Commissioners, thank you staff, we appreciate the opportunity to be here today. John Chase, Parks and Facilities Director for Grand Traverse County. So as we've talked before, um, we need a solution to be able to better understand our asset profile as a county. And that solution is not one that can be created in a vacuum, it's not one that we can just throw a number at, it's one that we have to make sure we've got empirical data. And so we've been taking a look for quite some time now at systems that would combine multiple systems together. So we currently use a workflow management system. That workflow management system helps us track activity and track, track tasks. And then, uh, what we'd like to be able to do is we'd like to be able to take the data from that workflow system, all the history and all the activity that comes from that, and be able to help that, uh, start advise us on our asset profile and the asset condition, and then be able to build preventative maintenance schedules for that asset condition. And then ultimately have that system be able to advise us toward our capital asset replacement plan. So with that in mind, uh, we have done research and working with many different vendors to take a look at different options. And each time we looked at a different vendor, it kept returning back to OpenGov. So we've got two representatives, as, uh, Mr. Alger had mentioned, from OpenGov today, so Samantha and Chris, and I'm gonna invite them up to the, uh, to the podium here to give us a little bit of background on the OpenGov product. We think it is an ideal solution to be able to fit that trio of needs and, and ultimately put us in a position where we have an opportunity to again, meet one of the strategic objectives of the county, which was to use, um, use technology to improve services and improve efficiency. This gives us a number of efficiencies, one of those, um, not least of many, is the opportunity to combine and leverage a previous investment that this commission made in, uh, an enterprise license for Esri GIS. So I'll let them, I won't steal all their thunder, I'll let them take the stage, so.
Hello, everyone, thank you for having us. Let's get moving right along. I am Samantha Grabavak, I am the Account Executive on our Asset Management Team. I'll pass it over to my Chris King, we got a lot of Chris's in the room, um, soon to do his introduction, but I've had the pleasure of knowing John and Chris since probably last September at this point, uh, again in 2023 for the first time. And then Nate and Chris earlier this year, um, where we came onsite and did a hands-on demonstration to really demonstrate how easy our software is to use. So I'll pass it over to my Chris King and then we'll get into, uh, the nitty and gritty of who we are and what we do. Sounds good?
Sounds good.
Cool.
All right. Uh, good morning, want to thank the Board for having us here this morning. Uh, my name is Chris King, I am our Director for what we identify as the Central Territory here at OpenGov. Uh, my family's actually from Grand Blanc and La Pire, so, all right.
Podcasts.
I knew you liked you earlier. Uh, we were talking about coffee, but I actually went to Michigan State, I spent 10 years working for Paramount Coffee in downtown Lansing. And, uh, I, while I support our teams across 15 states, I'm happy to put on record for you here today that Michigan is my favorite. Um, I absolutely love working with our customers across the state. I thought it best to start with a quick look at who we are before I hand off to Samantha to speak about the partnership, um, that she has helped to cultivate with Chris, uh, John, Nate and, and Chris over, uh, over the past few months. Our mission at OpenGov is to empower more effective and accountable government. And we aim to achieve that by equipping our nation's public servants with modern and powerful software to aid them in better serving their communities. Our solutions are designed to operate both in full in an ERP interconnected capacity, but also as powerful standalone tools to slot into your existing environments. We understand that governments are going to be at different journeys and different phases of their modernization processes. We want to be able to serve you in both capacities. Uh, and then we provide the opportunity to grow together as your needs change and arise over time. Across the OpenGov cloud, you'll see our financial management platform, our budget and performance, our procurement and contract management, our tax and revenue collection tool, our permitting licensing, and then the star of the show today that we're here to discuss is our Enterprise Asset Management Solution. Um, a few pillars that OpenGov brings to every partnership, we are very mission driven. Uh, again, our mission's to empower more accountable and effective government, and we aid our partners in adapting to the rising need of modern software. We are very customer centric, so we actually use the word fanatical internally, uh, both in how we deliver success and support. We do that through a direct customer support manager, so you'll have a named person at OpenGov who's your kind of go-to liaison, as well as our US-based, 100% OpenGov-employed, uh, support teams. We also rapidly enhance our products with quarterly feature updates. And we want to hear from our customers and use your feedback to help influence our product growth and development to meet your changing and most pressing needs. We focus on delivering real outcomes and for the investment our customers are going to make with OpenGov, we want that partnership to have proven results and we've delivered those at scale and we'll speak to those in greater detail here and what we can deliver for the county. And then just across the, uh, right side of your screen there, you'll see some of our partnerships for asset management across the state. Those include Detroit, Royal Oak, Canton Charter Township, Auburn Hills, Birmingham, and many, many others. Um, and across the country, we're working with, with hundreds of communities, uh, on this platform alone and over 2,000, uh, across our OpenGov environments. We believe that public service is personal. We know that this is one of the most challenging careers out there. And we have dedicated members of our staff, from our CEO to our product development, professional services, and customer support teams who have previously sat in your seat. They have seen the challenges you face on a daily basis and they bring that mindset to OpenGov daily in order to ensure you have a team of government expertise at your back every step of the way. And I'll let Samantha step up to share more about Enterprise Asset Management and our conversations with the county. Thank you again for having us and we're very looking forward to the partnership that we can, uh, we can build together going forward.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, any questions before we keep going? Okay, I want this to be interactive. Um, again, I have a feeling this crew probably gets a lot of asks for money, right? We're in the right room. Um, so I actually would love to, to see a raise of hands, right? With those asks, if, you know, people could come in and there was proven data on why that ask needs to be completed or why that needs to be approved, who thinks that that would make their life easier? Um, or if they'd like that, right? Data associated to the why, can I see a raise of hands? Make your life easier, you'd like that? Okay, cool, good, good. Um, so as Chris was talking about, we are here today to talk about our Enterprise Asset Management Tool. What's nice is that Nate and Chris have both had their hands on the tool as well as, um, Chris and John back here. And overall, right, some of the feedback that we received is easy, easy to use. You're always gonna have that change management piece, but really the, the key takeaway is really easy to pull dashboards, reports, and use that data in a way that gives you that why and gives you, um, the numbers to back each ask. So what that workflow really looks like is, let's start with assets. We have a map within the system, we have a list within the system, it's knowing what you have and a condition index score associated to each asset. We'll get into what that means in a little bit, but how we use that? We can actually create and assign work out to a mobile phone, a tablet like on your desk, or a desktop, and each of those views looks the exact same, right? So you can train everyone up and it'll be the same regardless of the tool you're using to access that data. And then track those resources, right? What are we using to perform this work? How much are we using it? Could we pull a report off of that? And then feeds all into, how can we use this to plan for our infrastructure, right? You all are growing. I mean, I was walking around yesterday and you can see how busy it becomes in the summer. And that's great, right? That's a great problem to have. So how are we going to keep up with our infrastructure and be able to plan for it rather than being reactive? So as I talk through that, um, the, you know, program that we would hope to bring on with you all, um, we actually group our assets by domain, so fancy word for grouping it by domain. Um, and parks and recreation, facilities, and walkability would be the package that we would bring on together. Um, each domain works fantastically together, but you might be wondering, okay, what is that, right? Which assets are included? What can we do? We know that there is an emphasis on facilities right now, right? Doing more with less. How can we make our days the most efficient? We want to make sure that we are alleviating some of that administrative work and time spent doing so and be spending that time actually out in a field, right? Less time at the computer, less time writing down what we've been doing and more time doing it. So for facilities, right, like you all are bringing on a new jail, that's a huge investment. How are we gonna track that investment? And how are we gonna plan for each building or facility and say, this is exactly what needs repaired, replaced, and here's why? Some of that data behind the why. Being able to quickly pull a dashboard and share a dashboard to each of you. That can all be automated, you could, you know, depending on what you'd like to see, you could receive that in your inbox once a week, once a day, once a month. Let's say John or Chris create a dashboard and want to share it with you all, boom, it's right in your login. Across the board, I, I will talk about how we have an unlimited user model, extremely key here, right? You're not gonna be paying seat by seat. We want more buy-in, we want those contracted workers, if you want them to have access, to have access. Um, any work that's done, really, um, we want that to be done in the system, so it's one resource rather than a piece of paper here, a piece of paper there. One resource and one space where each piece of data, each piece of work is being housed. You all know exactly how much work you're doing and this is a great, great way to show it. You are able to, you know, publish that out to the public or share, um, internally. So again, facilities domain, that's anything from HVAC to lighting to plumbing. And then being able to create those preventative maintenance plans, especially as we're trying to keep up with, um, the work of facilities. You'll see for park management, we like to say we have a container component piece, so you can actually see a little screenshot of what the system looks like. That could be anything from playgrounds and restrooms to ball fields. Uh, let's say you all have an event coming up, right? Sounds like there's lots of events going on here. How can we track across departments who's doing what or progress of completion for, for that event? What's nice is you can digitize all of those work orders, like I just mentioned, see the progress and create these data-driven strategies, um, a- across, across the board. And then to round us out, the walkability domain, so trails, right? I've been hearing trails since the beginning of our conversation, that is a huge, huge asset to track, especially when you are cost justifying, repairing, replacing, inspecting, right? Inspections, those can all be automated in the system. Um, the number that we have given based off of customer stories, um, a- across the board is 50% of the administrative workday is saved by using our system, using and implementing our system. So I like to note that, um, because that's 50% of your day that you could be out doing the work. Like I've been touching on since the beginning, right? It's all about better understanding your profile. You can track KPIs, you can share out those dashboards on your website, right? I saw that, um, some of the website was, was updated and I've been on that website quite a bit since the beginning of our conversations. So how can we make that website look visually appealing, right? Being able to share the work that you do as you do it, um, is key, especially when using a system like ours. Esri, congratulations, I hear that we are now on the Esri Enterprise Model, a huge investment, right? And we want to use that investment to the greatest of its abilities. Um, we actually have a bidirectional integration with Esri and are an Esri Gold Partner. So what that means is the investment you just made is now stronger. These maps are powered by Esri within our system, so anything that you do in the system, if you, if you want, right, during setup, um, anything you do in the system can directly communicate back to Esri, rather than, right now, that's double work, manual work. GIS symbology, again, this is while you're in our system, being able to quickly look at a map, a park, a ball field and tell what that is, um, by, you know, a symbol, an emoji, a color code. We all learn differently, right? We all learn differently, right? You have visual learners, you have those who like to look at lists. So we like to give both options, but it does really enhance the communication and the visual clarity of the entire platform across the board. Myself and Chris have been through implementation after implementation and what I love about OpenGov, right? And I think a big reason that Chris and John have continued to have conversations with us is we implement our software with our team or our trusted third parties and we keep a very close eye on that implementation. If you're going to be making an investment, you want to be able to use the software and understand how to use it, which is, you know, why we're here today. So we actually, once you're in the software, we will host user groups, which is on Chris's slide, right? We had those Michigan customers. You all can get together and discuss what's working for each city, county, special district and share amongst each other. We find that to be extremely, extremely useful across the board. We try to host those once a quarter, but there is absolutely, we have a customer success manager that's specific to your account once you're in the system. You're not talking to a bot, right? You are talking to someone like myself or Chris who's able to answer questions. We have actually won a Stevie Award for the past nine years, which is that customer service award for best in class. So that's where we really like to hang our hat and go back to, we are here to be a resource to you and help you along the way. We do quarterly releases. We like to gather feedback from our current customers and use that. Is there something you'd like to see changed in the software? Great, let's talk about why. And then we hear that feedback and implement as we go. Those quarterly releases, I say, honestly, they just make your life easier in any capacity, but the software itself is extremely easy as is. Maybe? So what I've been hearing just through my conversations and where we're at now is it's essentially, you're using eMATE, right? You're using this software that should, in general senses, be digitized, but a digital system is being turned into a manual system and then back into a digital system, but not all tied together, right? So it's double, triple work for the same work, too much administrative work. What you could do in our, or currently actually, reactive maintenance is something that I touched on originally, planning out what you're doing. Right now, we are reactive, which is creating a bottleneck in the actual actions of what we're doing day to day. And then in terms of why OpenGov, right? Why would we move over? I always say automation and workflow. I had mentioned you all could get an automated dashboard into your inbox, right? That's something that we want to automate. We also want to automate those repetitive tasks, right? There's an inspection that's done once a week. That all can be automated and assigned to a crew or a specific person. That feeds into preventative maintenance plans, being able to plan for costs long-term, and that unlimited user model gets essentially collaboration going across the board. A reiteration of some of the aspects that I just mentioned, especially in the domains that you all will be bringing on, tracking the overall asset profile within these facilities, anything again, from HVAC to a light bulb to a floor, right? You're making investments, you want to know where you're investing, how much it's costing you. Capital improvement planning is being able to forecast what you're going to be spending money on and what you need to plan for five years, 10 years, maybe even next month, right? Those preventative maintenance plans of automation, tracking, scheduling out where your crew is going to be and when they're going to be there. Especially, let's say, someone is sick that day. What's our plan? How are we going to reassign that? How are we still going to get that task done? That end-to-end support team is going to be key. Any issues, questions you have, we are there to help answer. And then unlimited user model, collaboration across the board. I'd just like to pull some quotes from our different conversation, you know, and I love this one that John said. "We want to be able to say, here's what we've spent on this facility and here's what's next. Run a report and here's everything that's due for replacement." Currently, you are unable to do that with ease. Will you be able to? Absolutely, with the few clicks of a button, right? You're using eMATE right now. Our data quality is not what it needs to be. Let's get you there with that Esri investment that you all have. GIS keeps coming up as a priority. Again, let's get GIS assets tracked and then perform work so that we can quickly and concisely figure out, okay, here's our plan, rather than operating reactively. Again, we had touched on, the number is 50% of the day saved on administrative work and that's really what this all goes back to, right? We associate a condition score to each asset and then are able to plan for repairs, replacements, the why and the data behind it. And then there's an aspect of time right now. You all are printing out 60-plus work orders a day and physically handing those out. Again, you all can use the system how you want, but we could actually alleviate that morning meeting of physically handing out work orders, you know, writing them manually and then coming back in to turn them into a binder or on someone's desk. What if one gets lost, right? This keeps track concisely in one system of what we're doing and how much it is costing you all. How you're going to be able to use that is capital improvement planning, asset age, you're boosting field efficiency, it's easy to use. And if you plan to onboard, you know, new staff, or again, it goes back to doing more with less. This quote from Chris, "Our crews are coming back just to fill out forms." If they could do that onsite, tablet, phone, that saves so much time. And then I just like to put in path to success, what we have been doing behind the scenes. We've been here for a few onsites. We've done what feels like a million software demonstrations to go through how our system would work and meet you all where you're at. And then we are here on June 11th to discuss any questions and just walk through, you know, what is OpenGov and how we can help. And that rounds me out. I'd love to turn it over to you all and help where I can.
Mr. Walter, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just, John was coming up. Did you want to say something before questions, too?
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to, so thank you Samantha, thank you Chris, and thank you Chris as well for all the work that has gone into this point, up to this point. I wanted to reinforce a couple of points in there that really apply to our business. So as was mentioned, our current system, eMATE, that system doesn't give us the ability to effectively use the asset information, or sorry, to use the work order information to be able to drive the asset information and ultimately to drive to the capital planning. So that's what we're looking to do is be able to tie all this information together. The other is that parks and trails. So when we saw the different domains that we're working in, so we look at it as parks are facilities. We've got buildings in all the parks, so we want to make sure that we're capturing all of that asset profile in the system as well. And then this is not a day one, everything's in the system, right? So what we'd be looking at is this is the repository to be able to collect all the information and be able to use that data, and we'll populate that as we go. Today, we don't have a system to be able to populate that, so this would be the way to be able to do that. We'd start with that asset or that workflow piece and then it continues to grow as we work on a specific asset. We tag that asset, load that into the system, and then we get better and better data as time goes on. And then the last piece to this that I wanted to mention is that there's no separate administrator needed. We've had a conversation with Cliff Dupuy, our IT director. We've had many conversations with the team here as well. This is not something that we're going to be coming back and saying, I need a separate individual just to manage this particular piece of software. This can be managed in-house with our existing staff with less effort than we're using to manage the existing software. So just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you. Any more questions, comments? Mr. Spence?
I didn't have my questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're not done?
I didn't ask any questions yet. I just saw that John was coming up.
We'll get him tighter.
Okay. I just have a few here. You mentioned, John, and maybe this is for Mr. Chase or the group here as well. What is the process of getting all those assets into this system? Because that's key to using it and we have a lot. So what does that process look like?
So what that process would look like is our techs who are in the field now, so we have eight skilled trade professionals right now, as they are working on different pieces of equipment in the field, they would tag that asset, so they would basically create that asset profile as they're in the field. So they're working on a rooftop unit, for example. They know that they need to change the filters in that unit, so they can go in, they can say, I'm changing a unit, I'm changing filters on an Aeon unit, it is this model number, you know, just basically tap all that information into their phone or their tablet, build that asset profile, and then that work order that they're creating links to that. So we can go back and look at that asset in the future and say, how many times did we do something on this particular piece of equipment? Here's the list from that point forward.
So it's an app on their smartphone or an iPad they have in the field or something like that?
Correct.
What they're operating?
Which is another really important piece, is that this gives us the ability to deploy that technology in the field where it's needed, as opposed to carrying around a piece of paper and then maybe not having all the information or not remembering all the information. We can add pictures, we can link manuals for the equipment. So if there's an operator's manual for, again, a rooftop unit, we can PDF that, link that, and when the tech is in the field looking at the equipment and they're not sure about something, they can actually pull up the manual and be able to see that as well. So another great resource. Yeah, please do.
Yeah. And then with that bidirectional relationship with Esri, any asset data that is in your Esri system today, on day one, we can pull that in. So you're not starting totally from scratch. What that allows for, exactly what John was mentioning, is then when staff is in the field, if an asset they're going to or something they notice is not in the system, they're able to enter it right there off their mobile device in the OpenGov platform, and then that information will automatically reflect in Esri as well. So you'll maintain that kind of data synchronicity between both systems without having any manual duplicative entry processes.
I have a few more, but if there's other people. Okay. So the next one, you mentioned it's an intuitive program, but what does training look like for our team to get up and running who would be on a totally new system?
Yeah, absolutely. So change management is going to be, you know, paramount in every process. We, as we go through the implementation, we are going to involve key team members in that process, so they are acutely aware of how to operate the system. We want to give you the keys to the car, right? So it's not something where, hey, we want to, it's a very configurable platform. We want to change a field and we want to collect an additional piece of information about an asset type or within our work orders. We want to train you on how to do that. So it's a matter of a few minutes in the system that an administrator can come in and do that work. So they'll be hands-on with our team through deployment. For more field staff, as we get closer to taking the system live, we'll begin to do some train-the-trainer and direct training processes. Those are built into our implementation roadmap and a part of every implementation process that we go through. Beyond that, we, and we've discussed with the team, and we suggest kind of what we call a crawl, walk, run approach. So we can begin simply by assigning the work orders to staff. They do out, complete those work orders. Once they get comfortable with that over a few months, we can then begin introducing more information capture into those work orders, starting to collect the materials that they're using, the time that they're logging on, you know, an HVAC repair. So we know then the maintenance cost in terms of material, the cost in terms of labor. We can start to aggregate that data, use that to influence our future capital planning, you know, decisions. From there, we can go even more intricate and begin to collect photos and start to do more of those preventive maintenance plans and use the information that you're capturing to automate and drive that net set. We're out in a park, we're doing our inspection, we see there's graffiti on the park. We mark that in our inspection. What our system can then do is automatically create a work order task to come out and do it at cleaning, and we can then capture the time and materials that were used for that cleaning task. We can then aggregate that report and say, hey, this park is receiving more graffiti than, say, another. Maybe that influences how we have our public safety officers, you know, patrolling at certain times. So over time, we can collect more and more information as staff gets more and more comfortable in the system, and we'll design our rollout to kind of meet that model. And then along the way, again, we have that key customer success manager, so a named party for the team to come to for any additional support. We have an online training course called OpenGov University. So any new incoming staff or staff who wants to go further into the system have the ability to do some self-paced training as well. But again, at the end of the day, we are there to support you 100% along the way and we are going to make sure that coming out of the gate and leaving that implementation process as we go into the go-live phase, that that training has been complete, staff is, you know, comfortable and prepared to use the system.
What kind of, did you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, if I could just mention one other thing related to that. So one of the absolute key pieces of criteria that Chris and I applied when looking at different pieces of software was the usability. We know that in order to apply this technology in the field, it has to be easy to use. That change management, as this Chris had mentioned, is a really critical piece. And we're basically doing business or we're looking to do business different than how we're doing that today. And we've got a population that's just not used to using that technology in the field. So we wanted to make sure that the tool was very, very simple to use so they could pick it up quick, run with it fast. And then, again, it kept coming back to, this is the easiest interface to use. Our system that we're using right now, I was fumbling through it one day and I was at home and I had a friend there who's a database programmer and I'm like, I'm trying to figure out how to create a report, I can't figure out how to create a report. And he looked at it and he says, well, just link this table to this table and do this and that and the other thing. And I'm like, my head about exploded just trying to figure out what, how to reprogram and link all these databases. When they don't have a name, it's just a bunch of weird characters. So it's got to be simple and we felt that this was the tool that is, has that simplicity and that power.
Yeah. Are you done? Commissioner Walter?
No, I have two more, but I'm happy to let other people ask.
Go ahead. You've asked all the questions I was going to ask.
Okay.
Yeah, you're doing great.
Well, the next one is about integration with Workday. Is there an integration with Workday? Dang.
So we have talked about that as a future possibility. That's not something that we're pursuing at this particular time. Workday does not have the capability to do this particular thing, and we wanted to make sure that it was available to everybody in a quick manner.
Well, I know it doesn't have the capability, that's why we're looking at a different solution, but how is it integrated? Like if you're, when you go to do your budgeting and CIP plan and invoicing and that's all in Workday, right, or connected to Workday? So what's the integration like?
Yeah, absolutely. This is something we discussed with Chris in our last onsite as well. We can build that integration to Workday. We've done it with customers in the past, so it's a capability that exists in the system. Asset management is very robust in its ability to integrate to other platforms. That's something we recognize at General SP2, wanting to be able to slot into your existing environment. It's something we've made sure is paramount in the product.
Is that an additional cost to integrate it?
That's something we would do as, it's not part of, I believe, that's something we have scoped in the current implementation. The idea is, let's get staff in, let's get comfortable, let's collect the right information. And once we're doing that, then let's reevaluate that integration and determine if that's necessary at that time. Because on the other side of that, there's a very powerful reporting tool. So using, we can pull that information out in reports and we can actually even automate that out to the finance team at the, you know, certain points of the year to ensure they have the information they need to go and when they're working in Workday, you know, leverage that information in terms of influencing what they're going to budget for. So this is kind of more information we'll use to influence those decisions as opposed to information that's been hitting like the general ledger or built into the actual budget. So we can, you know, give that data at a very minute granular detail or at a very high level, but we can say, that's where this container component relation comes into play. We could say, well, we've worked on the HVAC unit upstairs, we've done work on this bathroom over here, we've done some work to the foundation. We can aggregate that over to just total cost for the building of the year in terms of maintenance or down to those individual, you know, work orders that have been done. So that's where that can be used to help influence ongoing budgetary decisions. But absolutely can build that integration to Workday.
So what's a range of cost for an integration like that?
We'd have to discuss with our team because it would be a full build-out and I don't, I don't know that I would feel comfortable giving a number.
That's fair.
It could be, because we could start it with a smaller project and then build up, right? And that could be, you know, a number of, depending on your actual, we have what we call a scoping hall, which is where we sit down and talk about number of assets that we're talking about, right? A thousand assets. And we full build out a configurable project based on your.
Well, Sher, is that would be a one-time cost? That would not be an ongoing cost.
Right.
As was mentioned, we did investigate that, but one of the things that we also looked at is kind of that crawl, walk, run approach. at is kind of that crawl, walk, run approach. So we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to get this part of the tool up and running, get the data into the tool. So we don't have all that data in the tool yet, so there's really not much to report on from a Workday standpoint. But once we get that data in the tool and have enough robust data to be able to put out to Workday, that may be something we take a look at.
Just one more.
You're doing great. You're asking all the right questions.
Just on that, the vast majority of our customers do not build that integration back to their budgeting and finance system. They use information reports coming out of the system to help influence those decisions. So that's a, that's the typical process we see.
Okay.
What I will say too is, our implementation timeline is typically six to nine months, right? Where that comfortability comes and we're sitting down, really identifying where are we currently, that crawl, walk, run approach. Where are we currently? How can we match your team to be where you are? And then where's the goal, like, front? So if you're in that, that timeline and that implementation, I just want to be very clear, and you say, "Hey, we want to do the Workday integration. We want to know more about that." Like, we can have that conversation at any point, right? Like, we could sit down and add that at any point. Just know that nothing is permanent on, if you wanted to add that, that later.
The door never closes. We can do it at any point down the line.
I'm sure.
Yep, sorry.
There's always more we could buy. Got it.
No, it's just we never pass like a boundary in the system where we can't come back and build that integration, is what I mean.
That makes sense. This is a question for Mr. Chase.
Yeah, absolutely.
The, I'm sorry, you mentioned the name of the, of the current system, E-Maint?
E-Maint, M-A-I-N-T.
Are we under contract with that?
We are under contract.
For how much longer?
Just for this year.
Okay, all right.
Which I will say too, we typically, we're contracted, we're capped in some degree, so we can track that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I can add something to Mr. Chase's point, when we looked at the dashboard options for OpenGov, and OpenGov is a complete ERP. You have the functionality of a complete ERP in the event that we, you know, needed to change ERPs. But when you look at the dashboards that Workday presents, they are very, they're nice dashboards. They do provide information. The dashboards associated with OpenGov specifically through the module that we reviewed, they're really great to see. Within minutes, we were grabbing assets, putting assets into a geolocated space in a park, we were tagging it, and you, it was really, really a nice product to work in.
And you didn't have to program the database.
Commissioner Spence, you were after Commissioner Walter. You got anything?
Sure, there aren't any more questions?
All I got right now.
And Daryl had his hand raised, but are you, you're good?
Go ahead.
Sorry, okay, thank you. Great presentation, especially with the partnership with Esri. We just renewed our license with Esri. If we were to get into a contract with you, would we, would you take care of that licensing with Esri? Is it just a partnership that we take care of our licensing, and then you are able to utilize it with this software?
Correct. Esri's not a dependency for our platform. It is a massive enhancement. So you would still maintain your existing relationship with Esri. We can leverage, you know, individuals' Esri logins to log into our platform. Or if somebody does not have an Esri license, they would just have an OpenGov license and be able to log into the system. So there's also some continuity there for staff where they're not going to be managing multiple logins if they are already having an Esri license. But you would maintain your relationship with Esri directly, and we'll just maintain that system integration.
Well, and then the attribute tables, that, I can see them being huge. And I'm going to use Kent Graylik as an example, Mr. Chase. I walk, like, is it up to you to add an attribute, like, the disc golf tees? Or is that something that your customer service provides?
So, maybe we can tag team it. But to start, any information, any assets that live in Esri today will automatically be pulled into the system. Part of our implementation will then be also further building that out with the team and training on that. And then, once we reach the point of satisfaction that we have what we want in the system, and we move towards that go-live phase, if there's something out there in the field, they're out, and they're like, "We forgot to collect this bench in this park." Again, the staff can go in and collect that right in the system, you know, using their geolocation, tag it right where it is. That will then reflect within OpenGov, and that information will sync and reflect in Esri as well. So we'll be, again, maintaining that data in both systems with one action.
Sounds good. I mean, I, thank you. It's a good presentation, especially when you talked about the jail and all those, you call them assets, they're also attributes, right? Like little, like light bulbs, for instance. Yeah, I, thank you.
You're spot, yeah, absolutely.
Something I did not mention, and I could be.
You should leave the microphone for the people at home.
Something I did not mention, which is extremely nice, is the inventory piece. You heard Chris talk about crawl, walk, run, right? But there is an inventory piece of, let's say you use an attribute, right? And right in the actual system, I am completing a task, right? I used a light bulb. We can automatically have that deducted from, let's say you had 100 light bulbs, I used that light bulb, it's automatically 99 light bulbs now. So being able to keep track of what you have is huge in the system. Again, could be more on the run side of the approach, completely up to you. And to your question about Esri, again, the way I describe it is you're only solidifying your partnership. Most of our users utilize Esri. It's rather than having that Esri map, and then a system have the map on top of it, it's the two maps are the same. They're talking to each other in real, real time, powered by Esri. So just clarification on, on that.
Mr. Flynn.
I just have two quick questions, probably from Mr. Chase. The tech, the mobile, you know, iPad or phone, do our field workers already have that technology, or is that going to be an added cost down the road?
They have that technology now.
Okay, perfect. And then, I know we're using these study sessions to talk about 2026 budget. Is this cost looking to be in the 2025, added to the 25 budget, and then continuing on in 2026?
So two pieces to this. So it'd be a 66-month contract with an upfront implementation cost of $36,936, and then a prorated cost for the remaining portion of the year of $17,000 and change. Sorry, I don't have the exact number on that one.
$73,489.
Yep, it's in the packet there. So what we would do is, in talking with Mr. Bott, we currently have $7,000 allocated to renew E-Maint. So we'd use that $7,000, and then, and again, in conversations with Mr. Bott, we could take money that's, I call it savings in our capital, and then move that over to be able to cover the implementation cost and the remaining portion of the first-year cost. And then future years would be included in the operating budget for, for facilities management.
Thank you for the deeper explanation.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Nelson, thank you for your patience.
Well, Commissioner Walter took most of the questions, or good questions. And then Commissioner Flynn asked one of the last questions I had remaining. So thank you, that was about the devices. So, but to expand on that, are any addition, this is a relatively inexpensive process. These guys don't need to hear that. But for the bang for the buck, I think we're in good shape here. Any other costs coming on the county side that you're anticipating?
Not that we would see for this. So implementation, annual cost, and then just device management.
Okay. And you're endorsing it? Our administrator's endorsing it, so?
Yeah, there is significant value to something like this. We don't know anything that we need to know at this point in time. Like, we have, we have cost savings associated with our facility staff going back and forth to hardware stores to purchase nuts and bolts and things that they need on a daily basis. The inventory aspect alone, if we know that we're going to use 25 hexagonal bolts for park equipment, well, we can just keep them on, on hand versus going back and forth to the hardware store each and every day. The billing component of this, the, the information coming in that would allow us to charge appropriately to those buildings and to those other entities associated with maintenance that we do, to the Gov Center as an example, what is the city split, what's the county split, or other entities that we have relationships with. We don't have that information right now. It's, it's raw data that we just don't have access to, or the ability to clarify it. So we actually see the opportunity to save some costs or recoup costs that we have expended because of those reasons.
I think that, let's hold you to 100% of the promises here, but I think if we get half of this, we're still doing good. So I.
I was going to say to Nate's point, something like that, right? You can set reorder points. So if inventory gets to a specific, you know, that nut and bolt that you're going down the store to get at the hardware store, we can plan for that, right? Like, we know that we need on this date to stock up, then you're, again, it goes back to the administrative time, or the time spent doing tasks that weren't planned for, and having more time to go out and better the community at large.
Commissioner Nelson, you outside?
Yep.
Mr. Andrews.
Thank you. Where's the comment about my patience?
You don't get to say that, because you ask all the questions. We have to be patient for you.
Thank you. We are hungry for this, so we appreciate this presentation and this progress. It sounds like a great program. A couple of questions. One is, what assets are integrated into the system? And in particular, I've got a list of three. Vehicles, security systems, cameras. How pervasive is the asset component? How broad is the scope? Or is it facilities-type thing? So?
Sorry about that. Yes, so the way that we group domains is by asset type. I can actually, after this presentation, send you the laundry list of assets. But like, you know, John had said, it's everything from foundation of the actual, you know, the, the building to construction site, down to nuts and bolts and HVAC. The, the list goes on. If there is something not included, we do have a custom asset type, which we have built into the proposal that we gave you all, I believe, for three assets. But most often, they're all out of the box, when that comes to.
And is there a vehicle domain that you provide separate? I assume, you know, John is less interested in an overall vehicle, fleet management type of a, but I assume that is something that many of the organizations who you work with do want, and that, do you have a domain for that?
So fleet is actually built into the system with no additional cost. If you selected to track that within the system, it would just be that one-time cost low lift of getting it set up.
You had me at hello.
I love it. I love it. We're already building on, there's more domains if you want to.
So that raises another question. Go ahead, Nate, you're wonderful. Other entities within the county, I saw, you know, unfortunately, we didn't get the presentation ahead, but I see things like sewer, and what about Board of Public Works comes to mind. They must have, but maybe they don't. Maybe Commissioner Nelson knows, does Board of Public Works have an asset management program?
They do, but not as robust as this, and I would think that it would be something that could be incorporated.
Okay. And, and I guess that's a question, like, how do we, drains, right? Our drain commissioner, the road commission has a substantial number of assets. How, is there any competition within the county that we know of from any other enterprises using a different software that we should be aware of, and then, you know?
So the road commission does have an asset management plan. I think it's ClearGov? They use CityWorks. CityWorks. So that is something similar. But again, this is so much more user-friendly and easy for us to, we did evaluate that. You know, we evaluated looking at a partnership with the road commission. It just wasn't really something that would integrate well with us. And I know that Jim, through his presentation, can talk about his working with the DPW to try to, you know, use Esri to identify the assets for the Board of Public Works, as an example. Our implementation cost would have been, would have been higher. There's some out-of-the-box features that OpenGov makes available that are already in the system that we wouldn't have to build. A big one of those is a user input form, I'll call it. So right now, if Lisa has a, has a maintenance issue that she needs to put in, she can go to a form, enter that information in the form, and then it comes to us. CityWorks does not have that form, so you'd have to build that form separately, and then you'd have to use any API to link that. So that's an additional cost that's not already built into the system. That was a big piece.
Yeah, and I was going to ask that. Like, how does someone not on your team, your team's on the receiving end of those requests, what is Bonnie's, is everyone just have a link, or how do they know how to start, start those tickets? Yeah.
Yeah. So what I would say is, we, again, want to meet you where you're at, right? Right now, there's a lot of calling in. So what we would do is, I, you know, I'm Mary, I'm calling in. I can right there in the system put, "Mary called in, here's the issue," and then it'll create a task based on what Mary's calling in about. What I didn't mention, and I think a huge pro to the system, is you can choose, if you want, included in the system, to update Mary based on when that task is started, in progress, completed. So that would be where we'd probably meet you at, and just do it in the system as you're doing it now, and taking that form rather than writing it on a piece of paper. We're going to put it into the system, and it's all going to live in one place.
And I guess, can Mary, is there a button she can initiate directly instead of having to make a phone call? How does that, so that there's even one less level of automation? At 2:00 in the morning, she was working late, something happened, she needs to start a...
So a partner that we do offer, if you all would want to look into that, is ComKate, and that's a 3-1-1 system where Mary could go on and say, "Hey, here's the issue that I have." And then it would automatically, it's a very smart system, 3-1-1, it would automatically create that task, either an inspection, so someone can go out and confirm, or, or if, you know, like, depending on what it is, and it can mark that by priority. So if it's high priority, it's going to go to the top of the list in the morning. If it is, you know, low priority, it'll go to the bottom.
From the internal side, so Mary, staff member, working late, we also have an internal link that could be used, and has a dropdown capability to allow, kind of to customize what you want allowed to be submitted by staff. That can then populate work orders as well. So Mary could not have to call in, could go to the link that's been shared with her, leverage that to input her information and what needs to be done.
Two components there. The internal, Chris just mentioned, the external 3-1-1 system as a capability.
My last question is, and I appreciate everyone else has asked a lot of good questions too. How much does, is the data confined to the county's data, and how much is able to pull on the experience of all of your users? So for example, HVAC systems have a defined life expectancy based on whatever. Every county, city, enterprise is, has got those systems in it. Are you able to capture that data and inform our department that, gosh, you should be watching that, the life of that is coming to an end, you might want to schedule an inspection? So basically, building on the group data you have.
You're nailed on the head there. We, so our OCI score and the degradation curve is influenced by aggregate data from, from everything we're collecting. You also, because every community is unique, and locations dictate, right, different levels of deterioration, can adjust that degradation curve to match your standards as well. So we'll give you a out-of-the-box recommendation based on what we see across the board, and then we can adjust that and work together based on what we know about, like, communities like Meskegan, you know, not too far away, down to, you know, just recommendations we have based on what we see from communities in the north versus communities in the south. So built in from a, you know, base level, and then adjustable as, as needs arise.
By all means, Commissioner Walter.
I think this is my last question, but it has to do with the IT side of it. And if we, if one of our workers has an IT issue, does that all get managed directly through your team, or does our IT team need to get up to speed on the nuts and bolts of the OpenGov system as well?
So this system supports single sign-on, which is an easier way to sign in. So anybody who's using the system would simply use that simple sign-on, or single sign-on, which is what we use for our applications now. If there's something that we need in terms of tech support for the, for the system itself, that's something that we would take care of in working with OpenGov.
Directly to OpenGov, okay.
And then if I could also mention one other thing, Chris threw an acronym out there. I want to make sure we're clear on what that is. OCI is overall condition index.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Spence?
This is kind of in relation to what Commissioner Andrews was asking about in DPW. I guess I assume that DPW would also use this for, like, a work order to get their windows fixed. Just to use that as an example.
For example.
As an example.
What would it, would it be an additional cost to add DPW if they wanted to be a part of this?
So depends on where. So for example, when you say DPW, if I, if I'm, I follow this, thinking of our public services buildings, we've got buildings. We've got DPW staff in our public services building. They would have access to that link, and if they need a window fixed, or if they need a desk repaired, or something in that office space, that's something that would be able to go into the system. Does that answer it?
I was kind of under the impression that they're not, they wouldn't be a part of this.
So they...
I was talking about the assets that they manage out in the field, like sewer intakes and pipes that go to, as opposed to them as a tenant in a building of the counties. As a tenant in the building of the county, they are using our, they're part of the county. But they, we don't, John doesn't manage their knobs.
I see. Yes. Okay.
Those are township assets, so many of those assets are owned by other entities. So any asset that we own or are responsible for within the facilities, things like that, that would be something we would manage through the system, but we would not manage township-owned assets.
And as you'll see on the screen here, kind of gone back a few slides to the domains that we offer, and the reason we do that is twofold. It's pertinent to group, like, assets with like, because they're going to fall under the same kind of coverage and, you know, groups and departments that are going to manage those. But in addition to that, it allows scalability. We understand not everyone at an organization may be willing to move to a system at the same time, and so we want you to be able to pick and choose what's needed and add on as time goes on. So if DPW would like to engage in looking at the software for water distribution, water treatment, wastewater, stormwater, transportation, signals, anything that's under their purview, we'd be more happy to entertain that conversation and can add that on to the contract at any time.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So as we spoke with Samantha and Chris for a couple hours, a few weeks ago, and I know John and Chris have had a lot more conversation about this, I could sense John and Chris's kind of enthusiasm about the product. And when we sat down, when Chris and I sat down with them, hearing the Board of Commissioners discussions on this topic over the last year-plus, this kind of scratched all the itches. And so we are going to bring this back to you at the next meeting with a request for approval. And I just wanted to thank Samantha and Chris for all the time that they've spent with us. If you can get, you know, us to be able to get into a system within the short period of time we were speaking and actually manipulate the information, I think it's going to be easy for our staff to assimilate that.
He was great, and they really care.
Thank you for your presentation today, and though it was a little long in the tooth, but we had great questions. I think that's the best we've ever had, to be honest with you, in my term as a chair. Mr. Como, Director Chase, fabulous work. That's exactly, you just set the bar for everybody else in the county. I forgive the hate mail, but fantastic, what I've been looking for since I've been elected. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to take a 10-minute break. Oh, wait for everybody else. We have a county clerk department report. Bonnie?
Good morning, everybody. I am Bonnie Shealy, the Grand Tauris County Clerk, and this is my report. You'll see in your packet that the county clerk's office is a constitutional office. That means that myself and our other elected officials, like the treasurer, sheriff, register of deeds, we are the foundation of county government. We're in the Constitution, and we all have a lot of different duties to do. I have over 650 statutory responsibilities across public administration. I was elected by the people to serve the people. Our office provides modern, efficient services, electronic filing, remote access, improved online tools. When I say all of this, electronic filing is all in our court records office. We, can't remember what year, and I'll bring Kathy and Sam up in a minute. I can't remember what year we became a totally electronic court. So we used to do, back in the day, everything was paper. We used to have typewriters. We did everything by copying out of books. We've changed a lot over the years. This is my organizational chart. I didn't put names in there, per request, I guess. But I want to introduce to you Kathy Cook behind me here, if you want to come up, is my chief deputy over in my Circuit Court, Family Court Records Office. She's been with the county clerk's office for 25 years. She handles everything over there. In addition to her, we have an office coordinator, and then I have four deputy clerks over there. We need a certain amount of staff in our Circuit Court Records Office because we have to go into every jury trial, all the criminal proceedings, all the PPO hearings. We take in, how much money do you say we probably take in over?
We took $703,716.77.
So just over $703,000 goes through our office just in fines and court costs, but we don't keep that as revenue. That all goes to the court. But we manage all that. We take in all the filings, everything to do with Circuit Court, civil cases over 25,000 are filed there, felony cases, name changes, there's a multitude of different activities over there. And I don't know if you guys are as familiar with that office, because you see me and you see Sam a lot. But then, you can say, thanks. Thank you very much. Then I'm going to bring Sam up, and you all are familiar with Sam. He's my chief deputy and elections manager in my vital records elections office. And... Yeah, okay. So Sam and I are pretty much the elections department in our whole office. It's, I'm the chief elections officer. Sam and I handle all the elections during every election period. In addition, we do have a revenue stream because Sam programs our election, our election machines. So we are charging back to the locals the amount to program. So we're talking $20,000 in election. If he wasn't there to do that, then they would, we would have to hire a third party to do that job. I used to do it, and when I became the county clerk, I said, I'm not doing that anymore. So I'm glad to have Sam. And you know, we have all the birth, death, marriage, all the legal records, CPLs. We have a ton of filings. So I'll bring you back up in a minute.
I'll just stand here.
Oh. Okay, you protect me, all right? In addition, I am the clerk to a lot of boards. The Board of Commissioners, which you see me all the time, Sam helps me with that. I'm the clerk to the Board of Canvassers, so during the canvas, after every election, I am in there helping them through the entire canvas, answering questions, taking minutes. I'm the clerk to the jury board, which isn't that active. The election commission, which we have to have come up every once in a while, building authority. Right now, we don't have a lot of projects, but I think once we start some new projects, I might, we might be meeting a lot more often. Platt board, which I don't meet very often. Statutory appointment, as you know, we had, I was on to appoint the new sheriff when the sheriff retired, the new treasurer when the treasurer retired, and then the apportionment committee, which was very fun. I have four budgets, a big general budget. That includes the majority of my costs, their staff and everything. It's probably like 1.2 million just in expenses. Elections, I have a portion of Sam's salary in my elections budget, but I'm trying to think, how much is my elections budget? Just a sec. My elections budget, we spent about $218,000 in 2024. And then I have a concealed pistol license budget, which is just over, we spent over $22,000, and jury board, which was just over $28,000. Now, the election budget, I don't have much control over how much to budget because we don't know if they're going to have elections or not. And I have to budget as if we're always going to have an election in May, August, and November. So a lot of times, that money is unused, and it goes back into the general fund. But we have to use, I have to have that money because you have to have elections. My CPL is probably the only budget that I have more revenue than expenses, and that's concealed pistol licenses. My general budget, my revenue is probably 300 and some thousand, because we charge for all certified copies, and we are a hub of the Northern Michigan. So we have the big hospital here, we have all these births and deaths, marriages from surrounding counties too. So we are the hub and are a lot more active than others. Contracted services and annual costs. Well, we used to, back when I started a long time ago, we just had an IT department. But now, we have gone away from our IT department and started contracting to be in the cloud. And it really did help us when we had that cyber incident, because we did not stop our services. We could continue our services except in the courts, because my court office is still reliant on our local servers and our on-base and everything. But I didn't used to have contract service costs. Now I do. I have vital records, I have elections, jury. Those are costs I have to pay every year. I don't have a choice. I'm in the cloud, I have to have access to my records. ESNS is the most expensive one, and that's elections. I'm going to have Sam talk about our goals and challenges.
So we had kind of looked at what previous departments had done as they came in front of you, and some of the things that had been suggested. So we thought this slide would be a good opportunity to sort of talk about what is one of the difficulties in enacting sort of large-scale visionary government initiatives. And of course, staff retention is one that really bedevils us right now. We've had three employees right in the vital records office who haven't made it to their one-year mark before they've left us to go to other, more lucrative opportunities within county or city government. And that presents us with a number of challenges in being responsive, because we have a lot of institutional knowledge that walks out the door, and then a lot of staff time dedicated to training their replacements instead of moving on to larger projects. So one of the things we'd like to obviously partner up with administration and this board with over time is, you know, help with that retention piece, where we can maybe do something in the wage department or in other areas that can help us with retention. Because we, you know, as I said, we spend a lot of staff time on things, and what that does, of course, is it provides challenges when we have backups or when we have new skills that need to be learned or implemented. Every time that I spend training a new employee, it's less time that we can build redundancies and fail safes into our election administration, for example, right? When we lose somebody before an election... When we lose somebody before an election and they're the backup who know how to burn election media or know how to take in a campaign finance filing, and we have to take that and teach it to somebody new, and we've had to do that for the last three elections now. That's a time drag and a potential problem for the county if we're not doing that effectively. So we've been fortunate to do that, and we've been fortunate to sort of avoid any kind of pitfall. But as Bonnie had mentioned earlier, you know, we have 650 statutory responsibilities in our office. And while those might not all be unique, there's a lot of nuanced things that we have to teach and we have to make sure that people are understanding. So that level of nuance and that level of continuity is hard to come by. And we see that as a sort of an opportunity for providing good relationships with the public and with the other governmental entities. So, you know, we get a lot of interaction. Besides the Sheriff Department, we're one of the top interacting departments with the public. We interface a lot with the public. When we look at the community survey, for example, and see satisfaction with local government, we sort of think about that in terms of what can we provide for that, right? We're sort of the front porch of the county. When people need a service, they come to us. We provide that service. And if we can do it quickly and efficiently, sometimes that gives them a more positive impression about their local government because they're on their way to TCAPs next with their birth certificate because they're taking their death certificate to probate court. And if we have trouble filing those things or if we're not doing that as efficiently, effectively as possible or with a smile or keeping that line moving, that can lead to a lot of negative feelings and thoughts. So we're very proud of the customer service that we provide, and we're very hopeful to maintain a continuity of that despite some of these recent challenges. One of those things we'd like to do, we want to move to a more digital-based service. We had a lot of these, if you look at our contracted services, some of our vital records software, we have the capacity to make things available digitally that we don't need the physical space that we currently have. So we have, or excuse me, Bonnie has in the courthouse, the historic courthouse, about three offices. And the only thing that's in there are antiquated files and large file sorting machines. Be happy to give that space back to the county to maybe do something else with, provide some office solutions for folks over in the court records area. But in the meantime, we have to find something to do with those files. And if we want to digitize, there's a cost. So those types of things are important to us. We'd like to do more of them. We have looked at grant funding for some of our vital records and our election records. And again, we've lost one of the staff people that was helping with that. So that takes time off of that task. So, but we're still going to be looking at those kind of opportunities, still trying to find ways to provide more digital services, ways to sort of, if we can move from paper to digital and we don't need all the storage space, we can hopefully be a better partner with the county and more flexible in our needs. And when these upcoming moves and infrastructure challenges coming up, we could be less of a drag, right? You don't have to move all of our books with us. Election services is kind of a big deal right now. We anticipate from what we're hearing that the state is going to mandate us to buy new election equipment in advance of the 2028 election, and that won't be something we have a choice on. So we'll have to buy new software, become adept at it, look at new voting machines, have a public process with that, and that's going to take some time and some effort and probably a good deal of money that we're not really, have a lot of choice in the matter. We're going to have to buy a state-certified piece of equipment here coming up and some software. So that's something to keep on the radar. Point of pride, I'll just mention real quick, we're looking at, you know, these antiquated systems, JAS and MyFile and the AS400 and all of these different things. We're sort of proud of the money we didn't have to spend. So we've got some things that aren't up here because we were able to do them in-house using the software that the county already provides. So we have Adobe Acrobat, for example, and instead of purchasing a badge-making, an ID badge-making software, we used our in-house capabilities and looked at the software we already had and created some templates, and we make the employee badges without having to pay for any software to do that. A lot of counties are purchasing jury software to take those lists that come from the state of Michigan. But we're able to use our Excel, you know, our Microsoft Office Suite and a little HTML coding and make our lists through that. So that's a cost savings that we didn't have to come here and ask for jury software. You know, the Severa Election Archive, you know, we're doing a lot of our internal coding on that, building spreadsheets and sending it back to them instead of having the premium service, which would cost a lot more money. So we do a lot of stuff in-house to try to prevent us from having to need or purchase things. We have a lot of software that we're privy to and we're grateful for. And I'd say that's a good point of pride that we can leave you with, that we're able to save some money where we can and work in-house. But we're able to do more in-house if we can keep some of our people in-house. So thank you for that.
Do you have any questions?
Questions? Mr. Spence.
Thank you. And the Record Eagle did a good job of illustrating how much you do at the clerk's office. Last night, I attended the Garfield Township trustees meeting, and there was an issue brought up about the election services and some changes that are coming, some mandated changes that you just briefly spoke about. Have you spoken to the townships about what's going to be required and the costs involved? Apparently, there's a higher cost for these.
For everything.
Yeah.
Yes, the clerks and I meet every month. We have a monthly meeting and we go through all of that. And we brought our vendor up that we're currently using, and she brought it to our attention, you know, how much everything is going to cost because the townships will have to, if we, if the state doesn't decide to help cover things, they will be on the hook for buying their own machines. And we will be buying one or two extra machines because we need it for backups. And we will be responsible for the software. A couple of softwares, right?
Yep.
Yeah. But we, she's given us a huge heads up. We should be starting next year viewing the new machines. The last time we had to pick machines, I had all the township clerks and their deputies join us and see the demos of all three. We went into a room and we all decided together on which machine we were going to use for Grand Traverse County. It wasn't required that we did that. Some counties, the county clerk just chose which machines she wanted to use. But I figure if they're all in, if they're buying in, then they're not going to blame me if something goes wrong or they don't like it. So we're a really close-knit group, the clerks.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Flynn, did you have a question? Anyone else before TJ takes the floor? Mr. Walter?
Yeah, this is just about the digital archiving. When we did our tour of the garden level, there, there is both like a whole room full of stuff and then there's another room with some really cool old leather-bound books. And I can't imagine, I mean, I guess there's a process for digitizing all of that. But I remember hearing at the time that every year you were doing a little bit with the budget we had, and how is that going and?
So we were taking a chunk every year. I had money in my budget every year. The last couple of years, I haven't been able to do it due to, there's a lot going on. But we did get quotes to have this done, to have those all done. In that, that, the historic courthouse in the basement, it's $100,000 to finish it up, to finish the entire project up. I was going to bring it to the board. We have a board agenda item. And then when they put a kibosh on upgrading the first floor, I thought, wow, you know, I'd rather have $100,000 put into the first floor than those files. And I know the money probably comes from different places, so I kind of just slowed it down on that.
But what about the stuff downstairs? That courthouse is one thing, but what about all the stuff down here, too?
All my books down there. Those will be harder to digitize. And I did get a quote. Didn't we get a quote? Come up.
Yeah, we had them throw in the, some other things since, you know, the quotes are easy to come by. But it would be a few thousand dollars, about $9,000 to do our library books. The only issue is they have to go off-site. So they would have to do that, do a preservation and a digitization.
Is that something that you, I understand there was the same process this year that there was last year where everybody could go into a form and ask for capital and other expenditures? Was that, any of that included, to your knowledge, in this year's budget requests?
We were going to do it this year because I had talked to the finance director and he said he could, that the money was available to digitize. I was just going to go in chunks when I came to you guys, so I didn't ask for too much at once. I wanted to get the historic courthouse done first so that I could free up that space because that's good real estate space. I know the Circuit Court would like to have it. I used to have a whole office there. I had three buildings I was working, you know, working out of. And then when I became the clerk, I closed the historic courthouse, moved everybody over to the Hall of Justice, eliminated one staff person because it was, I was able to with having them together. And the judges were really mad at me for moving out of the historic courthouse. But then they forgave me because we were always still there for them. But I thought it was ridiculous to have my chief deputy bouncing between two courthouses, half a day here, half a day there. And now they all are cross-trained to do everything whereas at one time, they were just doing Circuit Court filings in the historic courthouse and Family Court filings in the historic, or the Hall of Justice. So it did work. We got them cross-trained. It made it much more efficient. But I'm still stuck with files.
Sorry, Mr. Walter, go ahead. You still got your hand up.
I know. I do have more questions. I just wasn't sure. Okay, so the other question I have is about the retention situation. And then looking at your org chart, and I don't know the intricacies of this, so I'm interested to get your perspective on it. You know, I, I hear a lot, you know, there is a lot of opportunity if you work for the county. There's a lot of different kinds of positions. There's a lot of ability to maybe move up to another position, make more money. It's often in another department. If, you know, it looks like you have five or six office specialist positions, which are at the same level. And then, so it's maybe hard to move up, right?
There's nowhere to move up unless you jump out.
It's not that there's necessarily a retention issue, more of like they're developing professionally. They want to make more money. They want more responsibilities. They want opportunity for growth. So they maybe move to another department where they can go up to the next step where there's more opportunity. So, you know, I don't, it is a bummer when you're trying to get things done and people are doing that. I just wonder if there's an opportunity within the department to create more growth opportunities or another step up or something so that you don't keep losing people once they, they move on from an office specialist, right?
That would be a reclassification, to add anything else. Years ago, I, we didn't lose as many. Our wage seemed to be okay comparatively. The city pays a lot more. Their wages are much higher. And then within the county, we have actually had people come and ask my people to come apply for jobs from the city, from the county. And I don't blame them. I hire really good people. And like just recently, I'm losing one to the city and she's going to make $7 more an hour. And I don't blame her. Who can live on $19 an hour? I mean, you can't. So I get it. I totally get the, that she, she wanted to jump over. But I don't know what to do because I didn't use to lose so many people. But, I don't know.
As you know, we have an ad hoc that will have its first meeting to look at precisely these. And I hope you will feel invited to share some ideas in addition to wage parity and what other things make it great to work for the county elections office so that people are less tempted to, or clerk's office less tempted to leave. I just wanted to reiterate to Commissioner Walter's point, digitizing and taking care of that. Before we move, we don't want to move boxes to a new, if we're building something new and this office is moving to the extent, that's something we can, we can foresee in the next three to five years, and it's going to take three to five years to get it done. Now would be a great time to be getting some of those projects taken care of so we don't have to find new storage to move Christmas decorations and other things that are in that, that storage room downstairs. So I, for one, welcome especially one-time projects that can be taken care of and don't carry legacy costs and frankly, save us money down the line.
Probably bringing an imaging project to you soon, then.
Commissioner Spence.
We were just in a meeting. We were talking about contracting a service to digitize files. I, was that at this meeting or was that at the facilities meeting, Chris? Where we were talking about hiring a company that would digitize a lot of these files that are antiquated and still necessary.
Yeah, we, we did. The Project Alpha team, we talked about the ability to look at a single vendor, a single contract, to do an organizational-wide digitization.
Would that help you?
Yes. I mean, we got a good price on, we had two quotes and we got a good price from both of them. I thought $100,000, I, right now, you'd be like, oh. But it used to be, I could, it would take like $20,000 just to do maybe one, would you say, one? One shelf of files. That's how much it'd cost. It's so expensive. So I thought this was a good deal considering how many files I have left. Because we did. We used to, and we used to do it in-house. In Family Court, the staff, actually, everybody had to like take, how much time? An hour every day to scan Family Court files. We were doing it all in-house and everybody was assigned, just take one hour and start doing this because we have to get this done. We got all the Family Court ones done. Everything's been electronic for a long, long time. So the ones that are in the historic courthouse are the middle group that we didn't get done because we started at the back, went forward, did some, anyway, it's the middle group.
Bonnie is actually one department head or elected official that is actually proactively trying to digitize as she goes. She does a very good job at it. The challenge is, when you saw the books, they're, they're big and they're cool-looking, but they're antiquated.
Yeah. Luckily, if they, when they digitize things, they're held at the, in the state archives. So I don't know how big that state archives is, but I believe, see, they would probably, I think they have to take the books apart. And, and, but then I don't know if they put them back together or what they do, but then they would be all digitized. So we do want everything digitized eventually. I mean, my whole vault, I don't know if you've been in there, but up till 2021 are all paper, death, marriage, and birth certificates. Now, our, our program that we use integrated the indexing, so we know that we have it if we look at it. But we know we have to go back into the vault, pull it out of the book and make copies. We would like to get everything digitized, especially the death and marriage because the birth certificate, we put into the AS400 in a, unless the AS400 completely goes away, then I can't do it. But we have them kind of in there to print out. But if that completely goes away, then we won't have that.
Does that $100,000 cover all of that, too?
No.
Oh, okay.
I would recommend you keep one book, just say how cool it was.
I know.
The oldest one, the oldest one.
The rest of them can go somewhere.
I go to some other counties and they have like one book for like 10 years. And I've got six books a year because we have so many filings, you know? I mean, we're the hub here. So we do have a lot, like 1,600, 1,700 births and deaths a year. And then we're issuing a lot of certified copies. That is my biggest, probably my biggest revenue maker is certified copies.
No more comments or questions. You guys should be commended. Bonnie, I like the responsibility and the wherewithal where you're going to pick and choose what you want to spend money on. Taxpayers, thank you on that aspect. I disagree with whether we're moving or not. This is something that I know has been a struggle for the county a long time, and it needs to get done. So we'll be talking about this again next week.
Good.
So, thank you so much. I learned a lot. All right. So, Mr. Baker.
Where yours is, Jim? I don't know where you start.
I think I did it. Jim Baker, Director of Equalization. Good morning. I want to start with thanking you for supporting. start with thanking you for supporting my office and we couldn't do it without your support. I want to thank my staff. They're very dedicated and knowledgeable about what they do. And without them, we couldn't do what we do. My first slide shows what our 24 actual budget was and what our 25 projected budget is. A neat statistic, well, and that's a combined budget that's equalization and GIS together. The neat statistic is that 83% of the cost is personnel, their computers and phones to work with. Discretionary-wise, there's only 17% that I can have discretion over. And, and actually, it's going to be around 11%, I believe, in the 2025 budget when it becomes actual. So just some interesting statistics. We also manage a grant, a remonumentation money that comes from the state. There's a separate budget for that, so we can show we're managing it correctly. And that's around So our office is like two offices in a way, like Bonnie had her different offices. And in the equalization department, we have a deputy director and two appraisers. And then me as the director. As a little bit of a history, Nate's smiling. When I got here in 2012, in the fall of 2012, I was a deputy for a short while. And, and I was one of five members that served under the director doing equalization. And now we're down to three under the director. I think the three is adequate as long as we can retain our knowledge and keep positions filled. The GIS department, or I say department, but the GIS within my department, they have two analysts and then a technician. And thank you to the board, what, a couple of years ago, Nate, that, that you granted that technician position. We actually feel like we have our noses above water now. And, and they're filled currently too. So I have no vacancies currently. I think it was just several months ago, I filled a vacancy in equalization. And I filled it with a person that has some GIS training and background. And that is in an effort to pull some of what I ask the GIS sub-department to do for the equalization purposes. And hopefully, we can do that ourselves in our equalization section. And, and that's what I've been promoting to a lot of department heads, is when you have an opportunity to hire, see if GIS is part of their resume because that's going to become very, very important as we heard earlier today. So in equalization, our, our goal is to provide solid, good recommendations to you, the board, as, as we together fulfill the statutory duty. And, and it is a statutory, my position's a statutory position and the department is statutory. And so we are trying to fulfill the duties to you when it comes to property tax law. And the biggest things are county equalization and then apportionment. We stay current with all the new property tax law and sometimes that is intimidating. It seems as if it changes. It definitely, there's some nuance every, every year. My staff, the deputy director and the two appraisers and I are all required to have annual recertification. We, we go to training. There are 16 hours that are mandatory hours of training. And then there's a mandatory State Tax Commission updates class that we have to take. And, and that's because legislation is changing so quickly. It's the thing that keeps us current. And then plus, we review all the things that, that add to giving you good projections of value and, and keeping apportionment report on track. Our guidance comes from the State Tax Commission and their publications. And ultimately, that's all driven by the, the tax calendar. So they have a document out there that outlines from January 1st all year, all the duties of, of the treasurer and the equalization director, all in a simple format and keep us on track for our deadlines and things. So our GIS goal, interesting there, when I got here in 2012, GIS was its own department. It consisted of four people, one of which was a coordinator, a GIS-trained GIS coordinator. I have assumed that position when in 2016, it was recommended that the two departments be combined. And so I took up the role of GIS coordinator and I had an analyst and a technician to work with. When, when I got here, basically, GIS kept 911 dispatch going and they kept a parcel viewer available. Since then, and, and with the recent addition, I've been able to really bolster our GIS presence. I have worked with staff to upgrade our system into the enterprise system that was discussed about earlier. And not only have we upgraded our enterprise up to the enterprise system, but we have combined enterprise licensing and systems with the road commission. That's what I recently came to you with, that you approved. And so we've been working hard in GIS to not just be a service to equalization. I run it as if it's a separate department. I've encouraged conversation with all the department heads. I, I like to get a hold of the new ones as soon as they come in and give them the talk. And, and I love that John has been very receptive when he got here and, and sees the power of it. And, and I think the new DPW director will be very open to doing something different than what they're doing based on our conversations. And, I mean, I could list out how many departments I help now, but it's probably less than a dozen, but more than six that we directly influence where, where the, the service underneath the current EnerGov system or not EnerGov, it's EPNL, that's Enterprise Permitting and Licensing System, that the Building Department and all of the various departments that work with them on permitting. We provide a 24/7 service underneath all of that. If we go down, they all go down and we hear about it in a hurry. So, so I, you know, if you ever want to discuss what all we do, I'd be glad to do it one-on-one. I'm not going to take the time today. But in, in summary, I will say that I might geek out on equalization, but I doubt many people do. So-
Surprise.
I will just say that equalization, to me, is as important, as important as a foundation under a building. But when you walk up to the building, oftentimes, you don't go, oh, there's a nice building and I bet it has a great foundation. And, you know, people don't see it, don't understand it probably. And so we're not very visible and, and we're quite often not really understood what we do. I try my best. GIS, they again, they're a foundation that's underneath a lot of things. Quite often, they are highly visible, like our, our parcel viewer, our parcel viewer on our website. That gets like over 103,000 hits a year, just on our parcel viewer. And so at times, we are very visible with GIS, but at other times, we are that complex, underground, you know, below-grade kind of foundation to support a lot of things that, that are going to happen. One of them is even like trying to work with the Health Department. And I got ahead of myself what happened there. Oh, nope, I didn't. I, I guess I skipped. Go back up to here. Yeah. So what I was referring to is the environmental health and the new septicage. They're coming to us and want to use our GIS service to geolocate and do what they need to do to enact that regulation for you guys. So I agree, employee retention is going to be key to the success in our, our department. Again, like Bonnie, a lot of the things we do are just super highly skilled and very unique. And I think in the outlooks, I would say that GIS will need to grow to meet the future needs, you know, five, 10 years down the road. I think you'll have to not let GIS get behind on the coordination of it. I think I've done a pretty good job coordinating it and bringing it up to where it's at. I feel like it's getting close to time to hand it off. I have not had any GIS training or anything, but I've understood how it works and what it can be applied to. And just as a heads up, in less than three years, Lord willing, Nate's shaking his head, you'll be appointing a new equalization director and hopefully not sooner than that. So that would be a time to think about, should GIS be a department again? Should, uh, put more resources to having a highly trained coordinator? And that's just the outlook I have going forward. And take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Baker? Commissioner Nelson?
So thanks for the report. I think it's fair to say that we have a lot of confidence in what you do, as much as we don't completely understand what you do, but I think you do a very good job of explaining it. And when I dig into it, I can tell when I've asked you questions, you know what you're talking about. So, thank you. Two questions. One, in preparation for possibly three years from now, looks like we need to kind of work toward having a replacement, maybe having a deputy in place or something like that. So have you made any plans for that? And secondly, unrelated to that question, is what are the, probably the biggest challenges you're facing in your ability to, to function in your role?
Well, I think that, you know, I have a deputy and there are very qualified people in my equalization staff. But there's, there's quite a hurdle in obtaining a master-level assessing designation. And the opportunity is available to the office to, you know, approach that. And, but I can't speak for them or what, you know, their hopes and dreams in life are. So I honestly think you probably will be able to find a director that will come and replace me. I, you know, I, I think it won't be hard. So who knows? If it comes internally or externally, that'll be up to you. And I think that we're running really well, I think. And I think we have everything we need. You, you've been very receptive in the past. And I can't think of anything that, that would lift us to another level or anything at this point. I guess, you know, I, we, retention, we have good staff. I, I want to keep them. We had a little bit of a retention problem quite a few years ago. I think, I think ours was alleviated a little bit when, when Nate was able to get us a little higher in overall pay grade. That, that stemmed our problem of retention. But honestly, as, as our GIS professionals get better at what they do, supporting what we're doing, there's going to be a lot of opportunity for them.
I parked next to a really nice German motorcycle in the parking lot today, so I hope someone gets to enjoy that today as well.
Already did once. I'm sure it'll be again one more time.
It's for sale if anybody's buying.
I know, but it's a nice motorcycle.
My wife already said no, Jim. Sorry.
Oh.
Any more? Commissioner Walter?
I'm not raising my hand to buy the motorcycle, but-
Sold! Don't knock it until you try it.
But the question is, at one time, the equalization director reported directly to the board. And then that changed. Can you just give us a little overview of the history of that?
Yes. Well, I think that was 2018 or 19 that the Board of Commissioners passed a resolution to provide day-to-day operation and oversight to the equalization director, to administration. So it was a, you did at one point in time have three employees, the health officer, the equalization director, and the administrator. But by resolution, we were able to move the equalization director onto, under administration.
Okay.
You don't have that option, Commissioner Walter, as the health officer, as an example. The statute doesn't provide for that.
For that, right. But with the equalization, we-
Correct.
-did that five or six years ago or whatever, six or seven. Okay. Thank you for that history. I knew there was something there. It wasn't found.
Yeah. The statute still provides for you having to appoint a director. But beyond that, then it's set up to report through Nate.
Okay. So when that opening comes available, sounds like in a few years, that that would come to us as a, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Andrews?
Thank you. Quick question. Bonnie talked about how she does a lot, a monthly meeting with township clerks. How does coordination with township assessors work? Is that something that you actively coordinate or is that a less organized group? I just see that those assessors in the township probably look to you as a leader in, on this front. And how does that, how does that relationship work?
Sure. The townships and equalization, we kind of go back and forth in the tax calendar a lot. We determine some value. We hand it off to them. They determine some value on individual basis, comes back to us. We see if that value as an aggregate matches a value that we predicted. And, and so the tax calendar goes back and forth and staff is, and I are probably weekly, at least monthly, in dialogue with them for whatever the next task is. The townships provide backups and, and exports on a regular basis when, when certain deadlines are needed, like the June 1st PRE deadline, July border review, and November 1st, and December border review. We get correspondence from them at that time and we update our systems with it. That, that then feeds into the treasurer's system so that they can make sure that, that the local treasurers, you know, are kind of matching what the county treasurer predicts should, they should match. And so we work with them a lot. I mean, even like when we do land value studies, we'll, we'll do a land value study and the first thing we'll do is just see if it slaps the assessor in the face or if they're good with it, if it's their gut instinct and what they're seeing from their data, you know. We're using the same data, so it shouldn't be a surprise. But they all work with us very well. They're very quick to respond to us. It's, it's a good team, kind of like Bonnie's close-knit team with her clerks.
I think you may be the only department head who gets their own meeting every year, dedicated- dedicated to one and only subject, so I think because we have that every year with you, we have a really good understanding of how equalization works. And I, for one, professionally and otherwise, take the work you do for granted, and I think that that's a good thing because it's so reliable and robust and accurate, and so thank you for the work you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, assessing is more of an art than, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Assessing is more of an art than it is a science, and Jim is very good at it. And one thing that Jim did for the entire county, quite frankly, was this Eagle View oblique imagery that we collaborated with the townships on to take very high-resolution imagery of all of the counties, so that the tax assessors for each township and local municipality can have that image so that they can make sure that they're assessing appropriately. And largely, you've already said it, largely Jim is very good at collecting that data, making sure that their assessments are correct, and providing you the annual report that leads to ultimately our tax collection in the following year.
Nice job.
Thanks.
So I want to say, out of those 100,000 views on the parcel, I'm probably 50,000 of them. So I appreciate that and.
Is there anything we could build in it that would make it better for you?
I don't know what would be. It's, it's pretty user-friendly, we're on, going to different counties and ours is pretty, pretty, pretty awesome, actually, quite, quite frankly. And I, I truly appreciate what you do, and I want to say, if you are going to retire, when you do retire, you know, I think the county will be handed off to, with the right information so somebody could walk in and actually do the job as opposed to how other counties are running, that kind of stuff, so thank you for your service.
And again, it's only because I have good staff. I hide behind them.
Well, I'm going to summarize that a little bit, couple things to comment. One, when you retire, make sure it's after the next election, if you would please, in 2028, I'd appreciate that. And, and also, so I was at a township meeting in my district yesterday, or Monday, excuse me, and they asked about some things that the county's dealing with, about, essentially my response was, as the county boards function, we look at doing county business, and we look at the size of the dumpster fire, because they're all dumpster fires. And it's raging under control, is it still smoldering? Not only you're not a dumpster fire, you don't even have a dumpster, Jim. And the county and my, and all the townships and people, and I appreciate your work, you're like solid foundation, like that's not even a blip, you're just do fantastic work, you and your staff, and I appreciate it, thank you. I do take it for granted.
Thank you for your support.
He sounds resolute on the three years, but we're working on it.
There you go. Maybe two?
I hope it's April of '28 and, and I'm not adverse to, to some kind of secession help if needed, so.
Ooh, heard contractor in there.
I definitely want to slow down and smell the roses a little bit.
Get that.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Fabulous work, as always. All right, and the county treasurer, Mr. Callahan, or treasurer Callahan, excuse me.
All right, let's see if we can figure this out here. I think this is me. Yeah, all right. Uh-huh, all right, hey, not bad. Good morning, everybody. Jamie Callahan, county treasurer, here to give a little bit of an overview of our office. So, yes, what we do, essentially, like Bonnie talked about, the county treasurer is also an elected official established within the Michigan Constitution. They're in Article 7, Section 4, kind of, of the current constitution is 63, the kind of a nice thing, or kind of a neat little factoid, is that actually going back to the very first constitution of the state of Michigan in 1835, county treasurers were also established within that. So, county treasurers span the entire history of the state of Michigan as a constitutional function. There's a number of functions that, that I provided with you, there's actually a, a number of more of them, but I kind of tried to boil that down a little bit into some of the main things that we do. I'm going to just touch on a few of them. One of the primary things is that we are the, do the revenue accounting for our county operations, so that money comes in, that comes in through us. We do work hand-in-hand with our finance department, they do a lot of things also kind of on the outflow, but as we do as well, just in general, accounting on that. So, like a lot of the checks and things and payables that go out, go through finance, but are initiated, a number of them are initiated through our office. We are the custodian of county funds, and in that, we do direct and oversee the investments of the county. And we have, and I'll chat on a little bit later, we do work with an investment professional to help with that a little bit, that's come on this past year. One of the other big things that we do actually, has to do with the delinquent property tax administration and the collection of those funds from across the county, any property that becomes delinquent. We assume that obligation from the townships, and then it's our duty to go and collect those funds from anyone who has delinquent, delinquent taxes, property taxes. And then from that, that does come down into the foreclosure process, which actually is a three-year prior, process of, for foreclosures, if someone doesn't end up paying, paying their taxes within that time, but is a three-year process. So something that started, we're working on parcels right now, this started in the foreclosure, forfeiture, delinquency process in 2022. We're doing those right now, and then we're doing similar processes for those that started in '23, as well as those that started in '24. Some of the other ones, we're being a fiduciary for the pavilions, as, in regards to revenue that comes in from the state, payroll, tax remittals, those sorts of things. We also manage the road commission funds that come in as well, be it from millages or from state, state payments. And then also, when it comes to brownfields, we also are overseeing and distributing, working on those brownfield funds and expenses that come from brownfields within the county. Jim had made some mentions in regards to equalization, we work with them quite a bit, just in regards to parcels that come in, as well as register of deeds and sales, we certify, certify parcels and land transactions, or land sales, and some of the funds that come in through that end up going through our office. And also, some of the other fun ones, dog licensing, we are required to be the dog license manager for our county, that's through state statute as well. So, we, we do that, and we are a passport facility for the US State Department for people that want passports. We help them with that process and getting those submitted on their behalf. The treasurer, we're, I am a member of a number of other entities, not as many as Bonnie, but I do chair the Land Bank Authority, as well as sit on the Election Commission, the Apportionment Commission, the Platte Board, and then the Building Authority as well. So who we are, we are a five-team member who's a lean, mean, financial machine. On that, it consists of three full-time employees, one part-time individual, and then myself as an elected official. Cindy's our chief deputy, and then we've got Sarah Patty and Connie, who round it out. They're an incredible, incredible group, and I'm very fortunate to be working with all of them every day. In regards to our budget, our budgeted amount for our department was 500, just over $540,000. If we break that down a little bit operationally, we're at 100, almost $122,000 with the rest of it, for the most part being committed to personnel, which I've noted is 77% of our budget is on the personnel side of things, and then our supplies budget is $2,500. The largest expenses within that operational budget is our, is expenses supporting our IT services, postage, we do go through a lot of mail, and then our contract services being our investment consultants, and then our delinquent tax collection process that we contract with a company called Title Check, which helps us and interact with all of the delinquent property tax people, as well as when it comes to foreclosures and the sale of any foreclosed properties is also managed through that contract. Couple of just opportunities and challenges wanted to mention for everybody. One of the ones that's coming up here in '26 is that we are converting our, our BSNA program, which is our kind of daily bread and butter tax and property tax and delinquency programs. That is getting, we are working to convert to the cloud in 2026 on that, so that is an opportunity for us and kind of where that goes. We've got a number of townships that are currently also using the cloud through the same vendor, so there'll be some nice even transitions when we get into that. Also, starting at the beginning of the year, we started, I think it was right at the beginning of the year, maybe at the end of last year, but we did implement a new dog licensing system in 2025, which includes some online registration possibilities for people that want to do that online, which has been real nice. Before that, anyone had to come in to our office to do it in person. We do partner with a number of veterinarians, offices across the county, and they provide that service, and we have a contracted, contractual relationship with, with those, that they receive a portion of the, portion of that fee for doing that and helping manage and submit those to us, and then we get the licenses out to the people. So there are opportunities, obviously, we're always looking for ways to provide some professional development for our team, especially I think right now with the new software coming and the ones that we've recently implemented, I think there might be some chances to help, help them become even more familiar with, with those programs. Challenges-wise, I mean, really, the, one of the bigger ones is the postage rates, you know, which we don't really have a lot of control of what the rate is, the, you know, the postal service continues to gooseier, you know, gooseier rate for a stamp for first-class postage. I hear it's coming again, so, you know, go buy some forever stamps again, save a couple, a couple cents per stamp. And then also, just that delinquent tax notification process involves a lot of mailing as well. I think over the life cycle of a, of a delinquent parcel from right at the beginning to foreclosure, I think the way, with our contracted vendor, I think they receive 13 pieces of mail in regards to encouraging them to get caught up on their property taxes, which also includes a couple of them that are cert, that go certified mail as well. And then, a little bit, a challenge, another one, can't really control the whole lot, is just the volatility of our investment returns. Obviously, we do have investment policies through the county, as well as what we're subject and allowed to do through state statute, but when it comes to some of the things of, some of the investments, when, you know, be it like a CD or a municipal bond that we're buying and investing, depending on what's going on, that rate and that return, depending on when you're buying it, can, you know, whether we're on the high side or the low side, will dictate some returns in the long run for us there. On the challenge, challenge side also, obviously, it is an opportunity and a challenge in converting to the cloud for our property tax system. It's a lot of unknown, just on how it's going to work, what it's going to really look like on that. We're working with their vendors, that vendor quite a bit on doing it, but when you're going to implement a new system, even though it's the same, even though it's the same, it's not, because it's now in the cloud and it's set up differently, and having to learn how to manage that again, and as well as I know that, just the implementation of it could be a little bit, I know that there's things within that for training for staff already that's built in, so it's just a matter of, of going through it. And so it's a lot of that, it's just a little bit of the unknown. And I just thought, throw this in there a little bit, our office equipment's a little bit of a challenge. It's, it works, it's functional, it's okay. It's a little dated, it's wearing out, you know, carpet wears out, things like that, the little parts that cover the, you know, cover the wires on the bottom of your cubicles and stuff, you know, they don't like to stain as well, so when you whack it with the, with the, with the vacuum cleaner or something, it falls over, then you can put it back in and stuff, but it's functional, it, it works for us. I think we were all pretty excited when the, the opportunity was coming for some new updated office equipment, cubicles and things like that, but I understand that that's on hold for the moment, so we're always hopeful and optimistic for that one, but I don't really know when we got all that stuff, but like I said, it, it, it is functional and it, it does operate, the doors open and things like that, so in that regard, we're, you know, we're okay there. So, that is, that part of it. And then just, you know, here's some contact information, we're downstairs on the first floor, all of us, but it's got my, my contact info in there, and of course, I just wanted to give a little shout-out to Alexander Hamilton for helping create the treasury system of the United States, which then helped come to us back in the start of our, our nation's history.
Are you jumping into song at this point?
I don't know those.
You just celebrated 10 years.
Please don't.
You've heard me so.
I want to hear it.
Alexander Hamilton?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know him.
I know everyone.
I haven't seen it.
Oh, wow.
I know, I'm busy doing accounting, I don't get out much.
Yeah, Hamilton, sorry, I'm uncultured, my apologies, Commissioner Walter.
Are there any questions now? Other than that?
That's my overview.
Thank you.
Are you going to be coming back with your investment report?
Uh, yeah.
I thought we, we were going to have that too, so I wasn't sure. We talked about that a couple weeks ago.
Yep, we are working on getting the last couple of bits, we've had some challenges a little bit on a couple little bits of data that are normally in there, and so that's kind of slowed things down a little bit on getting it ready, but we're, we're trying, trying to get that all put together, but yes, it is my intention to come back.
When can we expect to see those numbers?
My, my hope would be within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Commissioner Andrews?
Thank you. I, I really appreciate the level of data that your website maintains. I think the equalization department, the treasury department are treasure troves full of information, especially for, from a financial and tax perspective, so thank you for that. Along the same lines as Commissioner Walter's question, there's usually an annual report. Is that, are you envisioning the 2024 annual report and the investment report being together?
Sure.
That would be great. Those, those, those reports have historically just have a lot, a wealth of information. I assume they do take quite a bit to pull it all together.
A lot of data.
Yeah, and I appreciate, in particular, your help with me the last couple of weeks, trying to run down a few nitpicky pieces of data. We really appreciate the resources you provide us at the county, so.
Thank you. And I know that there's a little bit of data outstanding that we're trying to get for you.
I, I made Plan B, so, at least for my, my, and we could talk about that later.
Yeah.
Any more questions for the treasurer? Thank you very much for your report today, looking forward to seeing you in the future.
All right, sounds good, thanks.
So, second public comment, Bruce? Bitch? New guy? You look smart today, my friend, looking good. Looking good. All right, so there's no second public comment, we're going to be adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Really, new guy?
New guy.
I got, can't give it too easy to him.